Are we left? Excellent. Good morning, everybody. The time is 9:04 a.m. I'm going to call the regular term meeting, the B County Commissioners' Court to Order. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. We are physically located at the B County Courthouse, Commissioners' courtroom number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beeville, Texas, 78102. That was the call to order. Would everybody please stand and join Commissioner Lenny in a brief prayer of apologies?
That's okay. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for the rain that we've gotten so far. And please watch over each and every one of us, watch over this court, that we may make the right decisions for this county. And watch over everyone and bring more peace to this world, dear Lord. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas pledge.
On the Texas way.
Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Hey, yeah, finally. All right. Thank you, thank you. We're at Agenda Item Number Four. This is recognition of visitors. I see some visitors in the audience. There's no compunction or requirement that you stand up and identify yourself. This is not a public comment. If you wish to speak during public comment, that will come at Agenda Item Number Six. This is recognition of visitors. If there is anybody who would like to identify themselves for our recording device, you may do so at this time.
Good morning. Audrey Hamidis.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. I represent Lakeport Community and Urban Services, great manager.
Ah, good morning. Yeah, thank you for being here. Okay, anybody else?
I'm Tim Weatherby with Grant Works. I'm new to the area and looking forward to meeting all of y'all.
Welcome, welcome. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Thank you all for being here and please keep coming back. Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners' Court Opening Remarks. I believe Commissioner Lenny, you start the ball rolling this morning.
Okey dokey. Been a pretty busy couple of weeks. I attended a Realtors Board meeting where I was the guest speaker at, and it was interesting, to say the least. But also helped Dawn Tarver. She needed to spearhead a leadership project for a class she's taking. So we got some volunteers together. And there on the north side of town where the Welcome to Beeville sign is, and the FFA kids have put an FFA sign up there as well. We cleaned that entire area out so that it looks good and it helped Dawn out with her project. So also attended a Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting at the Elabro store. And I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce board members, Albert Reynolds, Janet Martin, Virginia Moya, Ronnie Ramirez, and Derek Rio, and Kathy Black with the Chamber. Also, County Judge Morrow, thank you. Mayor Watson, Chief of Police Kevin Baer, and Assistant Chief of Police Richard Cantu for attending. I appreciate all of you guys that attended, as well as Mary and Sylvia with the store. So, thank you all. And then the actual store project, we have pretty much finally gotten done with that. Thank God. I just want to thank everyone. The list is a mile long. We'd be sitting here until noon, listening, thanking everyone, so.
Take your time.
And, but I want to thank everyone that donated their time, money, materials, food, whatnot. We've got that store completely redone, restocked. And Mary and Sylvia, as I said, they just, and you should have seen them Saturday, they just broke down, just cried, you know. So it was, it was awesome. And then participated in the parade, which, if anyone doesn't know, our float that we built was a replica of the Elabro store. And we ended up taking first place with the business, the commercial business class. That was, that was a lot of fun. And then afterwards, we had a block party at the store itself. Want to thank La Amistad, Dolly 107.1, Elinette, for all the non-alcoholic drinks that they provided. And then also Mark Ponse, the owner of Leles Barber Shop, and AJ from Cut and Drip Barber Shop. They did free haircuts for about three hours. And weren't until their hands were so tired that they just couldn't hold a pair of scissors any longer. So, want to thank those guys for doing that. On a more serious note, I was called to assist on a, on a accident scene on 797 and 888. There's been several accidents at that intersection. And so I talked with Vicente at Tech Dot and told him that if it would be at all possible, I'd like to have the stop ahead signs placed there. I don't think there is any right now, along with some rumble strips and the LED lights around the actual stop signs themselves. So, he said he was going to take care of that for me. And with that, I will pass to my left.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Several things, Judge, Commissioners. I had a meeting in Mineral with about 20 folks. It's one of those current event type meetings. Lots of good questions. Kind of brought them up to date on where the county was and our budget situation and how everything was looking good. I know the other Commissioners have probably had a meeting also with the Nueces River Authority. Met with their gentleman, Philip Wiatrick, last week. We toured the colonias in North B County. And for those of you that don't know what a colonia is, if you're a county within 150 miles of the border, there are, let's call them communities, I don't like, really like the word colonia, but let's call them communities, that are designated as colonias by the Attorney General's Office. Beeville is not. It's an incorporated city. But Pawnee, Pettis, Normana, the Vance subdivision, which is Franco Lane and Linnley Lane between the areas, Tulsiito, Mineral, Papalotes, Skidmore, Tynan, they're all colonias. What that designates basically is generally a colonia doesn't have running water. They have four roads. They are contract for deeds communities. It was set up many, many years ago to help combat the influx of folks that are duped into buying a small piece of land. They had their ranch. They had their green. Signing a piece of paper, not knowing how much the interest rate was, how much they were paying, but they were paying by the month. The person selling it knew they wouldn't pay it off, so they in the play by the Attorney General's Office, comptroller, the whole Austin bunch got involved. Put a stop to it. We had some here in B County years ago. We've stopped that. In B County, most of our communities have paved roads. They have water wells. They have septic systems. We, the thing that they wanted to do for North B County is come in and put community water in places like Toledo, Normana. And I told the gentleman, I said, "Well, that sounds great." But, I said, "We had a water system approved for Toledo several years ago. It came before the court, and I requested the court turn it down." I said, "What happens if there's not a real need for the water?" Like in Skidmore, there was benzene in the water from the old service stations that had been in the town. Same thing in Tynan. They had benzene. They also had the septic systems and the water wells were too close together. They were put in back in the late, early 1900s when they didn't know how the distance. They had infiltration into that water. They needed to have a community water system. At one time, the high school and the whole school system in Skidmore was on a septic system. It was failing. So it was time. So that was all put in, I'm guessing, 20, 25 years ago. Pettis, there was a refinery in Pettis called Adonahole Refinery years and years ago. Don't know whether it got into the water system or not, but the water system was put in, it's my understanding, in the 50s. So it's been there a long time. So as we're going around, he's talking about how he's going to, you know, they can provide water. And I said, "No, sir, we don't want that." "Why not?" I said, "Would you want to give up your water well and get on a community water system and start paying water bills?" "Well, not really." I said, "Well, no, not really at all." I said, "Then somebody has to operate and maintain it." I said, "We have that problem in Pettis and Tynan and everywhere else. You're only operating on the amount of money you bring in. They're not a taxing authority." I said, "But you can't help us in Pettis with the sewer and water system." I said, "We're doing what we can through the American Rescue Plan funds in Pettis. You can throw money at it also." He said, "We've got about a million dollars we could spend." So I think the county's going to be the pass through. They're working on that now. We went to Pawnee. He said, "What can we do in Pawnee?" I said, "Well, they're on L.O.S. water from the Kennedy. They don't need water." I said, "But the school itself needs a bigger water main. They don't have enough water to operate the toilets like they should." So they're, they're working on that. And I said, "This particular school is also on a septic system." I said, "I'm not sure what can we do to cure that, but just be aware of they are." So that's in the works. Spent the whole day with him. I know he had, he had talked with a couple of other Commissioners about their projects. And the thing that I would caution the Commissioners' Court, whenever there's a lot of money and somebody says, "Man, we're going to do this for you," check with the local people, see if that's what they want. We do not want centralized water systems. We happened, we took him to lunch. A former sheriff happened to be there, and he was asking what we were doing. I told him, he said, "Oh, man, whatever you did, don't you put a water system in Normana?" He said, "We had a Commissioner years ago wanted to do that, and we told her, 'Don't do it.'" So I had him come to the table and relay that to the Nueces River Authority, so they can kind of be aware of that. But there's, there's more funding out there. There's a lot of money. The next thing I'd like to talk about, the Beeville School District. I graduated with a Beeville High School. Several of them here did. We were invited to State of the District meeting that the school had last week. To say that I was impressed is such an understatement. The camaraderie of the staff, the way the students interacted, the way they worked with each other was just outstanding. You could tell it wasn't fake. It wasn't phony. They serviced a meal. Turns out, they have a commercial kitchen that they're training students to be cooks. They cooked the lunch for everybody. Our state representative was there. Commissioner Oliverares was there. Our state senator was there. La Matilla was there. James Lozano was there. It was outstanding. And some statistics that I'd like to read in the record. They gave out some information. During the years of COVID, there weren't any ratings for the schools, but they started out as a C school. It is now B+. That's a TEA Academic Accountability Rating. And they're moving forward. And Travis Spanning is such a dynamic person, superintendent. I never had met him before. He's enthusiastic. He has his students in his mind and his heart. And he's, he's, he's good. I am impressed. Anyway, five campuses. They have an early childhood center, elementary schools, two, middle school, one, high school, one, DAEP campus, one, 202 classroom teachers. The student to teacher ratio is 19 to one. First teacher salary is $51,800. They serve 4,000 meals every day, $80,000 every month. They have a superior rating on the Financial Integrity Rating of System of Texas. They transport 708 students daily in the buses. They have 484 district employees, miles driven daily to pick these students up and deliver them. 1,208. That's 258,000 plus miles a year. And they have 12 CTE programs to study and 20 industry-based certifications. We're all aware of their welding program. I didn't know they had a commercial kitchen program. They have several other programs. If you get a chance to go by and, and visit the school, or you're talking to a teacher, the enthusiasm I saw with all the teachers was outstanding. I, it was like, "I really want to work here. This is a good place to work." The students serenaded us. The choir did, the mariachi band did, and the full band did. And they were all happy to be there and enthusiastic. So it's, it's a good sign, Judge. I, I really am impressed. And with that, sir, I will pass to my Commissioner to the left.
All right. Been a busy couple of weeks here. We have Judge Bauer's office, which is moving into the auditor's area. It's about 99% complete. And I think we're waiting on furniture for, for Judge. But all the flooring, the walls, the floors, data, everything's already all set up. It's ready to go. Vince? Huh? No. Come on, Dave. I had a call, two calls on tax statements, and I think I addressed that with Ms. Mattis. They're on the way out. Some were worried about their mortgage, not getting it in time to get the 3% discount. And so we're kind of waiting on that still. So we're going to see what happens this week. Thank you for checking on that. All right. And then the IT buildout. We're going to have a contractors meeting next week. That's the addition to the tax office for the three additional offices. So that's already happening. It's, it's been awarded and it's going forward. The internet for the McClanahan House, and I spoke to the people going to install. The rain has been holding them back. So I think they're going to have that set up by tomorrow, if weather permitting, so they can get their cameras set up, so there won't be no more break-ins over there. I did attend National Light Out. It was, it was real nice out there. It was a lot of people, a lot of folks out there at the National Light Out. And Blanconia, Blanconia Fire Department. Their steel has been ordered, like I reported last week. No reports now. It should be here the first week of January, so we can get our fire department going up there. And then at BDA, ICE engineers have completed about 25% of their project. So they're requesting payment from the ARPA funds out there for the infrastructure. So I've sent that forward, and that's already in the works. They're using the county as a pass through to follow our, how all our rules go on there. I did, I was a part of the interviews for the BDA Executive Director last week. And last night, we approved, and we've got a new director. He is Frank Dominguez, former mayor here. So Frank will be the Executive Director, taking over in a couple of weeks. Which, attended Western Week Parade and then the festivities afterward. That was very well attended. I didn't think that many people were there, but there was, there was lots of people there at the, at the site. So. The work on Bridge 421 between Goliath and B County, that's moving forward. And our end kind is, I'm pretty sure it's almost been met already. And Roden Bridge has already taken care of that. They've taken pictures of the infrastructure. So all our, all our work there, so there won't be any money being pulled out from the county. Texas Mile will be this week, this weekend. And they'll start probably arriving tomorrow. So there'll be a lot of activity. A lot's happening this week in here. Checked with the two projects, with Mr. Mercer, the one, the courthouse project, that seems to be on hold there. It's not on hold. We're waiting for the generator. And when the generator arrives, then they'll pour the slab and move forward. So that's the update on the courthouse generator. Any idea on when that's going to? They have no clue. They have no, there's no date on the generator arrival. So as soon as, everything else, all electricity's been set up, but it's, it's ready to go. And then I was also helping Ms. Warnick with additional election site, and I'm working on that currently still. So it's looking good. So I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed for that. And with that, I'll pass it over to Commissioner Oliverares.
Good. Thank you. Good morning, gentlemen and madam auditor. Morning, everyone. So I'd like to start off with a little bit of recognition first thing this morning, is I'd like to recognize the scoring team for the Economic Development Administration grant. The team was on a bit of a fast track to identify a grant administrator and engineer. So Jennifer, Michelle Mattis, and Ben Ramirez, thank you. Appreciate the hard effort and the hard work on putting together all information. Jennifer, thanks for leading the way. Gave us a lot of good information, made our job a little bit easier. So, so thank you. As far as some general information on the EOC building, which is going to go out at the Expo Center. Participated in a bid review meeting with all the contractors at the Expo Center at site. And great meeting. The main purpose of the meeting was to ensure that all the contractors had a clear understanding of the bid requirements, what was required, what was needed, and was fully aware of the project scope. Bigots are going to be due back in October, which, October 18th, which will then finalize, finalize our selection, the contract. I too, as with Commissioner DeWitt, attended the Beeville ISD State of the District Lunch. Lunch was provided, which I didn't know they had, was by the Culinary School that sent the school's meal. It was awesome. I thought it was pretty good. Did a really good job. And it was an awesome event. Glad that I was able to take part in it. Commissioner DeWitt highlighted, I was going to highlight almost the same things you did, but thanks for covering that. So we'll save a little bit of time and yield that back to the committee. So, so appreciate that. But it was, it was an awesome opportunity to really understand, you know, what our schools are providing, you know, to the community and also to later on in life, you know, what these do. Also, one of my big efforts is understanding, kind of a bottoms-up understanding, and getting a 30,000 view, how things really work within the county. I had a pretty long meeting, a little bit, roughly around three-hour meeting with our appraisal district. And the purpose of the meeting was to really become better educated on the whole appraisal process. Didn't get to finish everything because there's a lot more to cover, especially as we get into oil revenues and also ag exemption. That's a whole nother area that I'm going to dive into. But thanks to Ms. Casaldo and, and Mr. Draper for drilling down. Had a lot of questions, spent a lot of time with them, a lot of great information. And it gave me the opportunity to really understand, you know, what does the truth in taxation really mean? And also appraisal values within B County. Pretty interesting. Some of the information that I was looking for, reports to be generated, weren't available. So going to have to drill down. How do I get that bigger picture? You know, how can we break down where some of the revenues are really, or appraisals are really, revenue's another, another story. Also, I was asked to participate as a judge in the Charprimental Health, which will be coming up Saturday, October 14th. Looking forward to the event. I believe Commissioner Lenny participated in that last year, and I think there's going to be a few others that are going to be great. Awesome. Good. So I'm looking, looking, looking forward to that. I also had a meeting with Mr. Randy Steins. Basically, I just wanted to get a good review on new businesses that, you know, could be coming in, into the county. And also get an understanding of the challenges that he's facing on attracting new businesses, you know, to come to B County. So we had a great meeting, great learnings, good information sharing. So went, went, went very, very well. In the area of the Barnhart Scholarship Program for seniors, great program. You know, a key component of the success of this program is involvement of mentoring. I have been asked to participate as a mentor. I have completed all of my background checks and completed my certifications in order to be that mentor. This week, I will start my first mentoring session. I've been assigned two students to mentor. They are both very interested in attending Texas A&amp;M. One of them's going to be a civil engineer. The other one is going to be a mechanical engineer. So great, great choice. My goal with these students is to provide encouragement and also to help them in a little bit of a goal setting, you know, as they face the challenges in their career development. Hopefully, I can share some of my learnings that there are some great opportunities out there, especially, you know, with some of the recruiting and some of the major oil companies. I mean, you know, there, there's some great things that are happening out there. To give you a quick example, you know, they offer like a $100,000 signing bonus coming into the, to the, to the company. And then the salaries are starting somewhere around $100,000 for engineers. So, not too shabby, coming around out of college. I know that wasn't available when I got out. But it is now. So, and again, it's, it's, you know, helping these students. I think it's a great thing. And Commissioner, I was really impressed to see the caliber of the students and the interaction that they conducted with me. You know, the welding program, I had a lot of detail, because that is some of my background. Also, with the other areas, the FFA, the 4H, and all those other ones, they were just, it was refreshing, you know, to see how many bright students that we have coming out of our county. So, very good. In Skidmore, I attended a monthly meeting with the Skidmore ISD. Great information was, was disseminated. I also attended and participated in the Skidmore Fire Department Cookoff. It was a good turnout, considering all the other events that were taking place that day. So they did really, really pretty good compared to what they were competing against. So they may look into maybe changing a date, or maybe others may change the date. I don't know what's going to come first, but, but it was a good, good, good turnout. Responded to a few calls for assistance by a homeowner needing some help with the walkway. And then also going to get rolling the bridges involved in driveway repairs. Also, I'd like to recognize John for completing the repairs of the new walkway, which was a safety hazard at the JP's office. In Tynan, I attended a, well, there was a meeting here with the Water District and Grant Works to discuss the management of matching funds. Great learning for me. Gentlemen, I'm learning to ask more detailed questions at the beginning rather than later, even though this project has been in place for quite some time. And I know you shared that with me, so thank you. You know, got to, I should have paid a little bit more attention because I should have asked more questions. But I'm learning. Anyhow, gentlemen, we're having, and madam auditor, we're having a bit of a problem meeting the requirements stipulated by the grant funding company on meeting matched funds. Unfortunately, Tynan would not be able to utilize their machinery and labor supplied by board members. The work must be matched by an employee of the Water District. So then we got a little creative. Well, what happens if the Water District was to hire? It's not, you can't do that because you have to actually go out for bid. It's not, you can't do that because you have to actually go out for bid, competitive bid in order to, to try and do that. So there's a lot of discussions. We're trying to understand the requirements of that right now. So, so we're going to be, be working towards some type of a solution, so.
The rules. The age limits, do they need to follow the rules of the road? I see them on the sidewalks. You do not need them on the sidewalks. Helmet required. How many people can go on one of these vehicles? And you laugh. I have seen three or four on one vehicle and towing somebody. So is this allowed? So that's just something that's been concerning me and I'm hoping we can get ahead in the situation. You look at the other big cities, how much trouble they've had. You know, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Is there anybody else who wishes to address Commissioners Court? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Warnix, come on down.
Laura Warnix, Selection Administrator. I would just like to give a great big thank you to John Isagari for helping us with solve our signage problem for our mandated, mandated curbside voting that's going to be necessary for all future elections. And I'd like to thank John Hartman for helping us with a technology issue for the mandated texting number that we need to do. Thank you very much for all those gentleman.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Does anybody else would like to address Commissioners Court? Okay. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge.
Move to approve?
Oh, motion to approve. I have a second. I have a second. Commissioner Lenny? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. I'm sorry, we started talking at the same time, Commissioner. Moving on, discussing, consider action on the following items. Agenda Item Number Eight, Approved Library Agreement between the Joe Barnhart, B County Library and B County.
Move to approve.
A second with a question.
I've got a motion and a second. Commissioner Olivares, you have the floor.
So just more of an understanding, Judge. I noticed all the contributions coming from the county and other entities. I noticed the city didn't participate. Is there a reason for that? Or are they involved in another way? I'm just, I don't know, I'm just kind of curious.
I'll, I'll decline to comment on that. I don't know why the community doesn't wholeheartedly support the Joe Barnhart, B County Library. The Barnhart family, well, the progenitor, Dr. Barnhart, and his board out of Houston have provided more hard dollars to this community than any other nonprofit entity in the history of this, of this community. Whether it's through the school programs that they provide, other private, support of other benevolent organizations, or the existence of an amazing community library that is, is and should be the envy of small communities around the nation. I'm sure the, there's a perfectly justifiable reason that is very disappointing to see. So I guess I won't hold my time.
Judge, I couldn't agree with you. You know, coming from a little bit of a bigger city, I mean, what I found with the library provides to the community is unbelievable. I mean, the internet service, the free training, anyone learning how, you know, use, you know, office products, 3D printing, one-on-one sessions, I mean, it, it is great. If anyone wants free learning, that's the place to go and it's free. It's just pretty amazing. So anyhow, enough on the library. I'm, I'm pretty impressed with what they've done.
Thank you. Anything further?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Nine, Approved Resolution for the Texas Indigent Defense Commission Fiscal Year 2024 Formula Grant Request for Applications.
Move to approve?
I have a motion, I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. This is largely housekeeping. We have to do it annually, every year. We would have done it last Commissioners Court meeting when we were dealing with all the TIDC, TRLA, Agenda Items, but it just came into our attention a little bit later than that. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Ten, Approved Pawnee Independent School District Resolution Requesting Distribution of Funds from the Permanent School Fund.
Move to approve with an amount?
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner DeWitt, what's that amount, sir?
Judge, I understand it's $4,476.78.
$4,776. I apologize, Commissioner, we were talking.
$4,776.78. I stand corrected.
Thank you.
No further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Approved Emergency Expenditure for Immediate Molder Mediation at the B County Courthouse and B County Law Enforcement Center. I have a motion and a second. Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion?
I have some questions, Judge.
Absolutely.
Looking over these bids, I see one for $11,861.37 where they've taken the tax off, which should be no tax. And that was the bailiff's office here in the courthouse. This is another bid for $39,816.23 and I think that is for the SO in jail.
Yes, sir.
But on the last page, they're showing a tax of $3,034.63. That's my question. Is that a tax that shouldn't come off, Madam Auditor, that accidentally got on there?
Well, this isn't an invoice, so this is just a quote and it, it looks like what we crossed out in the, in the maintenance quote is the same situation as this one.
Okay.
We will get updated invoices before we pay.
Okay, page 231 is where it is. Yes, ma'am, I just happened to see that because I always look for tax, but it's, those are my questions, Judge.
We'll, we'll, we'll look after that.
Okay. Nip it? I think they'll take their, nip it?
You mean the remediation component? Yeah, we're, we're hopeful. It's an ongoing challenge, I know. Sheriff South made a, can ask you to comment unless you want to, but I, I know that we continue to work really hard in the county to get the particular kinks of the HVAC system at the sheriff's office worked out. I think we're getting.
We just hope that it comes sooner than later.
Yeah, so we're going to get that done just as quickly as possible, as well as the courthouse.
The courthouse, right.
We've got some actuator solutions that John's working on to hopefully avoid having this issue come up next time. Fortunately, time helps as well. Cooler weather, shorter days is going to change the humidity level the HVAC systems bring into these buildings.
Just for the comment, I, I noticed this is an emergency expenditure.
It is an emergency expenditure, yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we only held off a little bit on it to try to get competitive bids, to try to make sure that we were capturing a solution that was actually meaningful and not just...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's very difficult. So we look forward to hopefully solving this issue moving forward. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Approved Recommendation for the Award of Request for Proposals, RP Number 22/23-015, Administration Services for the Economic Development Administration Application. I don't know who I should turn the floor over to here.
So Judge, go ahead.
No, no, no. You did the scoring, go ahead and finish that.
Okay. So Judge, I was honored to be part of the selection committee. You know, the fun part that we're starting to deal with now is that some of the companies are providing services back to B County or getting very, very competitive and very good. Anyhow, somebody's got to win and somebody's got to lose, just like in a World Series game. So anyhow, after doing our due diligence and interviews with, with various people, we have, I'd like to make a motion, make sure I get them, get these turned around, for the administrative services. We, I turned on the wrong one here. Sorry. Yeah. So anyhow, so they were close. We did the bidding and anyhow, I'd like to make a motion that we award to Langford Community Management Services for providing the administration for this particular grant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Congratulations to Langford. We look forward to working with you on this project. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Approved Recommendation for the Award of Request for Qualifications, RFQ Number 22/23-016, Engineering Services for the Economic Development Administration Application.
Judge, I was also part of that and, you know, we had the opportunity, actually had one of our members of the board here actually physically participate and it was refreshing to get some information. Again, both companies were very close. Both companies are adequate to do the work, however, we had to make a selection. So on this particular time, gentlemen, I would like to make a motion that we approve the engineering awarded to ICE to participate in assisting us with getting a grant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and that is international consulting engineers.
Thank you, Judge.
Not immigration, Customs Enforcement. I don't think that exists. Does it? Is ICE gone? That's a bad name, a bad acronym for a federal entity. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Approved Tentative Offer Including Land to Real Rural Economic Assistance League for the Replacement of Local Transportation/Staging Area. Commissioner DeWitt, no?
Yes, sir. Judge, if I could ask some latitude, if we could discuss this before we get to the possible motion?
Absolutely, absolutely.
As the court is aware, we were approached a month and a half ago by these folks about possibly them turning their facility over to B County and some history. The court's been working for years to obtain this facility. It's right next to Roden Bridge. It's on the right-hand side as you went down toward the old sheriff's office and jail. When I was actively involved trying to do this, I submitted several open records requests and that's when the other entity realized they didn't own the land. They thought they owned the land, they had the building on it, and when they realized they didn't own the land, I'm sure there was some gasp like, my goodness, we spent all this money and we don't own the land we put it on. Because when you own a piece of land and somebody else builds on it, guess what? You've got a problem. So I enlisted the help of Phil Monvella, our, at that time, our congressman and federal congressman, Jay Mazzano, Senator Zafree, all of them were helping us move this forward to try to obtain this facility. It was built approximately 30 some odd years ago. The depreciated life of it is about 35, 40 years, so it's getting close to the depreciated life. We made several passes at them like, hey, we'll buy it for what's left on depreciation. It's, well, we've got to have a facility. Well, we'll find you something else. It's immediately adjacent to our Roden Bridge. Roden Bridge can use it as a big maintenance facility to operate and maintain their equipment. It has gotten now, they came, talked to the court. We toured a couple of sites when they left. They had a consultant that gave us a PowerPoint and I took them to the old sheriff's office and jail on Toledo Street and their ears started wiggling big time, like, man, this is great. We can use this, we can expand our, our operation here, we can start food service, we can do this and this. Fast forward now to about a week and a half ago, well, about a month ago, they're interested and they said, contacted the judge, just talked to Commissioner DeWitt. They've got Tech Dot money coming in in December to do something. They want to do something. Well, when I contacted Mr. Aurelius, Martin Aurelius, he said, well, I think y'all have alternative sites. And I, I went back and I said, I don't think so. We have the sheriff's office in jail, the former sheriff's office in jail, and we have the site immediately adjacent to it where the adult and juvenile probation was. He said, well, aren't there any alternative sites? Well, then it clicked. We have an old precinct yard off of 59 and what is that, Jackson Street? And Jackson Street, it is just sitting there. And we're spending a lot of money mowing it and keeping it clean and nice. Looks like a little park. It's about four acres-ish. The court had it surveyed at my request several years ago because there was a sign on the property that looked like it was on our property, but we weren't receiving revenue from it. The survey indicated, yes, the sign was on our property. This, if you go down, it's right across from where the city collection stations are, right north of that is where that property is. There's a huge billboard on a big concrete base with a galvanized pole. It's on county property. I contacted the company out of Victoria and it's, no, that's not on county property. That's leased to somebody else. Well, I got the guy over here with the state experience, yeah, you know, it is on your property. He said, we want at least 30 foot around. I said, no, you don't understand. It doesn't work that way. You owe us for this sign, you can either pay us or get it off here. Well, it costs a lot of money. So they're paying us every year now, is my understanding. Anyway, to make a long story short, that property is sitting there. It's adjacent to the Poyster Creek, it's right next to it, but it's, to my knowledge, it's out of the flood zone. It will work. So at the last Commissioners Court meeting, I asked the court if they had any property in their precincts. I know this property is Commissioner Lenny's, the other two properties are Commissioner Olivares's precinct, they're in your sandboxes. Is there anything else we might have? I, I don't want to recommend anything at the Coliseum. I don't, I think that's too pristine out there to put something like this. I, I would not welcome that recommendation, but is there anything else that you know of or somebody in the audience might know of that we can offer these folks? What they're wanting to do, they, they want it deeded to them this time, which I appreciate. And we can put a codicil in the deed that if it ever is not used for that, it reverses to the county. That's no big deal. But these three pieces of property are sitting there doing nothing right now except one of them's costing us money. We're paying liability insurance, a little over $32,000 a year on the old sheriff's office and jail. We have those three that, that I know of, do y'all know of anything else? Or any suggestions? I mean, that's where we are.
They have another jail right there on Paulus Christian.
They need about four, three or four acres.
That's our county secure storage facility.
Thank you, Judge.
Very secure.
Very secure. The Toledo Street jail didn't?
Well, well, that's when, I, I thought it was, their ears wiggle so much, I thought that's what they want. But then they said, y'all said you had alternative properties. I think they want to know what was out there and then they can say, well, this one looks good, this one looks good, whatever.
Because if I remember that Tech Dot guy on the presentation said, well, we don't want a low, low area or close to creek. That's the first thing that came to mind when you said that old precinct yard, because it was right on the creek.
Well, except that the, the flat area is away from the creek. There's, there's some huge oak trees there, but there's a nice flat area that right adjacent to the street, the city street, that, to my knowledge, I haven't checked, but I think it's out of the flood zone. But what I'm trying to get to here today, we have those three properties, we could say, okay, guys, come look at these three and see if one of them will fit what you need and then bring it back to the court and say, okay, they want to do this one. Because we will have to probably survey it and do a deed. I know the sheriff's office wants to make sure they keep at least 40-foot right-of-way on one side if they were to put up a fence. The type of fence that I'm going to ask them to put up is a paint line on the pavement. I, I don't like a physical fence, but we'll, if, if we need it over them, they can kind of do what they want to, we can steer them. But what I'm asking the court is to, is there anything else or is this the three we can offer them, one, two or three?
Commissioner, I'm not aware of any, but I also want to thank you for your diligence for, because I know you've been working this project for several years and still keeping the pulse and keeping it going, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
And also including me in, in your discussions, I appreciate that as well.
Yes, sir.
So, no, I'm not aware of any. I, I think one of these three facilities could be a match and I, I think, you know, we were probably onto something, let's see what their true needs are and see which one's the best fit for them.
What, what I will do, and I'll make a motion here in a minute, get permission to approach them formally and say, okay, guys, come over, let's look, let's, let's get on the ground and look and include the commissioners if y'all want to be involved, if not, whatever we need to do. And they can say, yes, we'd like to do this, because they're going to need to do their study. to do their study. Martine told me that what they're going to need to do, once they decide, yeah, this one looks good, it'll be up to their consultant to go and do the groundwork and decide, yes, we can do it.
I think it's a good idea.
Because I know, too, there's someone else that's interested in buying that property at Jackson as well.
Well, that's good. We get some, get some competitive stuff. Of course, anytime, I'm kind of funny about selling government property. We're not going to give it away. It's got to be appraised value. Because people say, well, it's government property. How you use it? I'd get it for a dollar. No, 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 no. It doesn't work that way. We'll just keep.
Does Ms. Mattis have a list of all the properties that the county has? Do we get hold of?
Well, several years ago, Commissioner Hager and I both thought we had found a huge amount of county property that was just sitting there doing nothing. Turns out it was roads and subdivisions in our communities. And they're listed as property, but it's the roads. We've pretty much exhausted. We haven't found any. And I know we enlisted auditor's help and Ms. Mattis's help in trying to find if we had any property that was sitting there we didn't know about, so we could put it on the option block.
I would be interested in that. I would just been notified, not to change the subject here, but there's some property down in Tina that is county property that I wasn't aware of until yesterday. So, and they're looking at building some solar panels in that particular area. Pretty interesting.
How much property is down there?
I need to survey it. I don't know. They tell me it used to be the old dump site.
Oh, that's going north.
By the Mengers property.
It's going right across the road with those mesquite trees and all that right there.
So the exact size, I don't know. But I need to find. So I didn't mean to digress.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion for the court to allow me to continue forward with this and to meet with them on site and let them look at these three pieces of property, make a decision on which way they want to go, and bring it back to the court.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No. Look forward to, like, just.
Good. I'll let you know.
I echo Commissioner Olivatas' comments. Thank you, Commissioner Dewitt, for continuing on leading the county in this process. I'm very excited about it. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Moving on. Agenda item number 15. Approved B County Jury Selection Plan. This is largely housekeeping.
Move to approve?
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, multiple seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 16. Approved Justice of the Peace JP Precinct Four Request to Use County Credit Card for the JP Seminar in Galveston, Texas from November 26th through November 29th, presumed 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception.
Just a comment before we go any further. I have to appreciate being able to use the county credit card. There are folks that have a $500 limit on their credit card, or they don't have a credit card, and they're doing all county business, and I feel that the least we can do is help them out this way.
Absolutely.
Just a comment.
Agenda item number 17. Approved JP Precinct Three Request to Use County Credit Card for the Texas Justice Court Training Center Conference, TJCTC, in November 2023 for payment of registration and hotel reservations through TJCTC's online payment system. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 18. Approved B County Clerk Request to Use the County Credit Card, this thing's going to be melting, to purchase otter business for commissioners' court meeting minutes.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This is a really useful program that's going to just make the county clerk's office ability to generate, prepare, finalize, and present us for approval of the eight minutes. So I'm really glad that this acquisition is moving forward. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 19. Approved B County Auditor's Office Request to Use the County Credit Card to Reserve Lodging at Kalahari for Risk Management Conference in March.
Move to approve. The comment?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Dewitt?
Kalahari is not in Hawaii. It is in the United States.
They're not going across the water.
They're going to Round Rock.
That's all the way to Round Rock.
All the way to Round Rock. And if you do get up to Round Rock, you should leave the Kalahari Resort to go to Round Rock Donuts in downtown Round Rock and get yourself at least one of their regular-sized donuts. But if you're feeling particularly excitable, one of their giant donuts. Did I get a vote on that?
You have a motion and a second.
Okay, thank you. Sometimes I get lost with the sound of my own voice.
Donuts will do that, too.
I'm getting hungry now, and I'm wondering why we don't ever get donuts.
I know.
We can put it right here. Facing with that as well?
No. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 20. Approved Memorandum of Understanding MOU between B County and the Bville Police Department Regarding the Loan of a White 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe. I know we have Sheriff Southmaid and Bville Police Chief Kevin Baer present. I don't know that, don't need to make any presentation, but you're more than welcome to if you'd like.
No, whether we're just, we have an extra vehicle, or I wouldn't say extra, but one that we can do without, and their needs, so.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 21. Approved MOU between B County and McMullen County for the sale of K-9 unit Belgian Malinois Palet or Palais?
Palet.
Palet? Palets.
Move to approve?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second with regrets. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 22. Approved Auditor Operating Procedure Form for County Issued Cell Phones to be added as Appendix P to the B County Auditor's Procurement Procedures. Got a motion?
There was no attachment in my packet.
Got a motion and a second?
It should have been.
Yeah.
I did have one. I can't get this.
No, no big deal. I just didn't see the page. Very good, very good, very good.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 23. Approved Texas Okeoide Settlement Agreements. We have no settlement agreements to approve, so we'll pass on that agenda item. Agenda item number 24. Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant, CDPG. Status and project update. Commissioners Fadios or Olivatas, do y'all have anything?
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail. We're still waiting.
We're still waiting for some updates on that right now.
Okay, great. We're still excited about the city receiving their award, right?
Yes, sir.
Right. But we're still waiting on ours.
We're still waiting on ours.
For projects.
Yeah, the Pettus, and then the Titan Water, and then the 621. It's over.
Okay, let's go, GLO. Anything further? No action? We'll move on. Agenda item number 25. American Rescue Plan, ARP. Status and projects. Commissioners Dewitt, Lenny, anything to add?
Still waiting on the check.
Still waiting on the check.
Checks in the bank.
Checks in the bank.
It's in the bank.
We got it. It's in the bank. Drawing interest.
Yes.
Over 5%.
5.40?
And that's, I hate to use this term. I'm not going to use the term you're thinking.
Thank you.
Free money.
Were you going to say secret?
Secret squirrel.
Yes, but I decided not to do that.
That's good. She doesn't like that.
But I like the ears that are moving. I like that.
Oh, I got to get their ears.
I like to see that.
Almost could. I had to. I wanted to interrupt his presentation just because I liked that so much. I can see it in my mind's eye. It's quite entertaining.
It is.
Before I move off of agenda item number 25, once again, and I know I've said it before, but I just want to thank all four commissioners. Our commissioners have worked really hard on these two very large buckets of money, and I think y'all have all done an excellent job in trying to make sure that we use that money in a productive manner for the county and for the future. So thank y'all for everything y'all have done there. Moving on, we have no executive session items, so we will, with regrets, move to agenda item number 26. Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you for being here today. Everybody have a great rest of your week. That was a quick meeting.